Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. And with that, I would have, like to have an adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions or deletions?
Just two notes I'd like to close in memory of Maxine Wilkin, longtime Brisbane resident, and also John Facet, longtime Brisbane resident, who both recently passed. And Maxine's son Gerald worked for the city, too.
Okay. Any other additions? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And with that, we will have an introduction of our new associate planner, Julia Capasso.
Capasso. Thank you, Mr. or Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce you tonight to our new associate planner. She's in the front row here, Julia Capasso. As you recall, we added a planning position in this year's 2014-15 budget to help us get up to speed on a number of projects and planning efforts that we have going on in the city, not the least of which are general plan updates and the ongoing Baylands development and the housing element. And not that Julia will be working on all of those, but she'd certainly be taking her share of those. Julia is a graduate with a degree in environmental studies from the University of California, Santa Cruz, affectionately known as the banana slugs. She worked as a planning intern for the City of Greensboro, starting in July of 2009, and worked up to being an assistant planner, where we were able to hire her this, in December of this year, and she came to work for us on December 1st. And welcome to Julia, and wanted to introduce her to the council and to the community. I'm sure people will be getting to know her and see her quite a bit, as planners have a hard time hiding. They're always very visible in the community and visible issues and subject matters they get involved with. So, welcome to Julia.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Should we start to torture now?
No, I prefer to give her a little.
Well, welcome, Julia. I look forward to working with you, as does the rest of the staff in the council. Welcome. Would you like to say anything? Come up to the mic and say hello to the public.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and community. I just want to say how excited I am to work for the City of Stars, and it's been a great two months, almost three. So, thank you.
Congratulations. And now we have a presentation by the Deputy Finance Director, Cooper, for the California Annual Financial Report.
Yay. What the heck is a CAFER? Hopefully, my voice will hold out. I've been coughing all day. Of course, the CAFER is government speak for the comprehensive annual financial report, and this is the one for the year ending June 30th, 2014. And the CAFER just completes the financial life cycle, where we start with the budget in the spring, or at the beginning of the year, and then we find out how well we stuck to our plan or not. The CAFER has a structure. It's all audits are required, or all cities are required by law to have an annual audit. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the GASB, sets the rules. The Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, has the recommended format. So if you pick up any city's CAFER, you will find it pretty much looking like ours. It has an introductory section, a financial section, and a statistical section. The introductory section is comprised of the table of contents, the letter of transmittal, the organizational chart, the principal officials, and the GFOA award if it's applied for and awarded. We haven't applied for the award in a number of years. It was a cost-saving measure, and we haven't gotten back to it. But we do our CAFER in such a way that we're sure we would be awarded the GFOA award if we applied for it. The financial section has the independent auditor's report, which, again, is proscribed on the format it's in, and it's more detailed this year than in past years, because they're always looking for more information. And we have an unqualified opinion, which is good. The other part of the financial section is the management's discussion and analysis, which is the MDNA, and the basic financial statements, or financials, which is your statements, your notes, and required supplementary information. One of the most important parts of the GASB 34 gave us, almost 14 years ago now, was the letter of transmittal and the MDNA, and they should be considered together to get a full picture of the city. They're not supposed to have duplicate information, and the MDNA usually has charts and tables comparing us to the prior year. And when you look at the financial statements, you've got your government-wide financial statements, and you've got the fund financial statements. And the government-wide financial statements are looking at all the city funds as a single integrated unit with full accrual accounting, where the fund financials are looking at each fund individually, similar to subsidiary accounts in a major corporation. And then we are also, the fund financials are on a modified accrual basis, which is just looking at cash when you've actually got it in your hands, and you're paying your bills when they're actually presented to you. The government-wide includes the capital assets and the long-term debt, and the fund financials doesn't. And of course, the fund types, we've been through this a couple of times. There's governmental, there's the proprietary, which are the business type, or otherwise known as enterprise funds, and the fiduciary funds, which are, for the most part, it's the successor agency, and then it's the developer's deposit accounts that we, where we keep track of what we're doing for the developers. And someday, I'm going to figure out how to get a PDF screen to look good on a computer screen, but it doesn't. This is the statement of net position, which is the government-wide financial statement, and the net assets minus the liabilities give you the net position. And in this one, it's the total position of the governmental funds is $69 million. Of the business-type activities is $31 million, for a total of $100 million of net position. Then you have the statement of activities, which is the government-wide way of looking at your revenue and expenses by function, where you've got your governmental functions and your business-type activities. In this one, you're looking at the change in net position, which is $12 million, $12.8 million for the governmental funds. And we're showing a negative change in net position of $3.5 million in the business-type funds, and that's predominantly because we moved the park and recreation out of the enterprise funds and into the general fund. This particular screen is the governmental funds balance sheet, and it shows your normal assets and liabilities with the fund balance. And the fund balance that we had in the general fund at the end of the year was $12.1 million, with $8.5 million of that in unassigned fund balance, which doesn't mean it's all there to be spent, because some of it is tied up in your receivables, some of it's tied up in your deposits, that you're holding for something else, because that's counted as part of your fund balance. But it's, we're in a relatively good position for the year. And then we have the income statement, which isn't what government calls it, but it's your revenue and expenditures and the way you normally see an income statement, with the other financing sources and the change in fund balance. And our change in the general fund fund balance for the year was almost $1.1 million. Overall, we had a negative, but that was because we refinanced the bonds, the 2001 A bonds, which were part of the successor, the successor agency to the BPFA, and it's all now strictly in the successor agency. This is just an example of the statement of net position for the Marina and the utilities. And again, it's showing us in a pretty good net position. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net balance, it's $1.2 million for the utilities, and again, the Marina is showing a negative because we moved the assets over to the general fund. Then we're going to go into the notes, and some of the notes follow the financial statements. They began on page 33 of the CAFER, and this is where you find the details for the numbers on the financial statements. And when I read a CAFER and when I read any of the, any business report, I usually start with the notes, because it's where they hide all the details. And, you know, it's where you find the nitty-gritty. And our CAFER, the notes, the first three notes discuss policies on accounting, budgeting, and cash investments. They're pretty standard. And I'm going to show you one example of a little bit of the detail of the long-term debt note, which is note eight. And the long-term debt starts with a table showing all the debt, and where we were at the beginning of the year, how much of it we paid off, and what's left at the end of the year, and that gets split into what's due the next year and what's due for the rest of the year. And after you do that, then each of the bonds is then developed, there's a little thing that, a little blurb that tells you what the bond is and how it came about, and it's followed by the debt service over the life of the bond for that bond. And the long-term debt section goes for about eight pages in the note, so it's quite thorough. The next section is the required supplementary information, where you have the budget-to-actual data, and you also have the combining financial statements for all the non-major funds, which, so all the governmental funds that were lumped together back on the first sheet can be found individually in this section. What's interesting about the budget-to-actual, for the general fund, our budget, we expected to use about $850,000 of reserve, where we actually ended up earning $1.1 million. So we had a really good year. And the final section is the statistical section. This is the section that shows you the trends. It's 10 years of data. The first four pages are government-wide, and then I've also included one of the other ones, which is the governmental activities by tax revenue. And this one's an even worse screen than what you saw before, and I apologize for that. But I wanted to show you what 10 years of data looks like when it's spread out on a sheet. And then it's also graphed, so that you've got the invested in activities, as the blue part, the restricted, is the red, and the unrestricted is the green. And what that represents is that we've gone from being negative unrestricted to a positive unrestricted, which is excellent over 10 years. And then the governmental activities by tax revenue breaks down, and it shows you 10 years. And because we are a small town, it fluctuates all over the place by different ones, but the total, it's very interesting that this year, we're back about where we were in 2005 and '06. And you'll have to ask Stuart whether or not we're ever going to hit 2008 again.
Yeah.
And that's it for this year. Are there any questions?
No. Thank you, Betsy. You know, I don't have any questions, but I'm just, you know, I'm just really thankful for all the work that you've done into this and how much care you put into your job in preparing this document.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's definitely a very impressive work product. And I think it's also good that it's being presented to the public. But it's a lot of stuff, very dense, and very difficult to follow for someone who's not into these kind of things. And we've been working on getting, you know, summary statements and putting them on the website and so forth, so that people can get an easier sense of what the budget's all about, and how much we really do have access, and how much is tied up in a bunch of obligations, and some of the obligations are not funded. And so we have all sorts of things that the council knows about and the staff obviously knows about, but the public probably doesn't have much information on. And as I've noted in many occasions, we're dealing with the budget mostly in June, and we sell them of any public at all.
Right.
Because it's just over everybody's head, and so they don't know what's going on. And so, unfortunately, because it's the budget that really determines the priorities of the city, and what we spend on and what we don't spend on. So it's really unfortunate that we don't get more public involvement in that. And so I guess the only comment that I was making, and maybe I'm directing this to the staff and to our budget committee, you know, how do we try to, you know, get more public involvement in this important, you know, decision-making process? I keep getting these emails from this organization called Open Government. I suppose you all receive those, too, which they're claiming that they have ways to make budgetary information more transparent to the public. I'm not sure that's true or not, but that's what their pitch is.
For a nominal fee?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I don't know how nominal. But anyway, I think that, you know, we certainly have the information, it's been, you know, beautifully put together, but getting that translated out into something that, you know, members of the public, even members of the public who really want to dig into this stuff, can easily make sense of, you know, that becomes a challenge.
We have looked into Open Gov, but since we're planning to change financial systems, we've kind of stalled on that, so that we don't have to do the same work twice.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully, by next year, we'll be able to take advantage of something like Open Gov.
Okay. Great.
Just one quick question, and I mean, it's probably just Stuart and Clay, since they wrote the transmittal. They did really good on the acronyms, but except for one, what is the SLPP grant?
You have to ask the Public Works Director for that one.
This is on page, Roman numeral five, of the transmittal.
I don't have it easily in front of me. Let's do yours. Sorry?
It's for street and road improvements.
That was state dollars. I don't recall the acronym off the top of my head, sir, but that was a somewhat complex exchange of funds that the Transportation Authority was able to do with us. They were approached by the California Transportation Commission that had some state dollars, and so we took that in, and we exchanged some of our Measure A funds and worked our way through that.
Mm-hmm.
I'll get back to you. I'll send you what the acronym is.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. It's not a showstopper by any means. But Betsy, good job. Thank you on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie, any questions?
No questions. Also, very impressed by the document, and I agree with Ray that it would be good to be able to find a way to make the budget information more accessible to the public. I was at a conference, I think, and one of the people from Open Gov followed up with me, and I put him in touch with Betsy, and as she said, you know, it's just not right timing right now, but hopefully in the future. Sounds like we will look into something like that, because I know they work with the City of Palo Alto, and they have all their information online accessible. So definitely something to look into.
The one thing that's very good is, in the past, it has seemed to me, when I was, before I was on the council, that the staff has always been very good about answering questions and giving specific information when possible and when given time to compile it for a group or a person that wants it. So thank you for being accessible to the council and to the public. Thank you.
I was about to follow up with that. Anybody who has any questions, the information is online, but I do understand that it's not, it's easy for me to read, and I deal with it every day, but if people do have questions, they, you know, please give me a call. And as I've said in the past, there's often times when I've been swimming where people have come up to me and asked me questions about the budget. So, I mean, I am around town, and if you see me, I'm more than happy to spend five minutes or an hour, and I can do either way, because I enjoy this stuff. So anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, may I, the SLPP is the State Local Partnership Program. It was, that's the dollars that the voters approved back in 2006. It was called Prop 1B, the state measure.
Thank you. It answers Clark's pressing question. So that brings us to oral communications, number one. And this is the opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And I have a slip from Andrew Torvik. If you'd like to come up and state your name for the record.
Andrew Torvik, and I'm a 47-year resident at the same location, 231 Alvarado, Brisbane. And my question is more not to you, it is to the city attorney, about my witnessing a whole group of migrant workers in a parcel, two doors from where I live, shoving heavy timbers up over city-owned easement with irregularities in the stairs that vary from four inches to 11. 73 years old, is marked by the street, down by the street, and I was wondering about the liability that is involved with any injury that could result on city property, with many numerous building code violations, one of which is very dangerous, a 10-foot wall that wobbles. And when I brought it to the attention of the city, it's been two weeks before they sent an investigator out. Upon my request, I made written requests. I've been to the city hall several times, requesting that they send their most qualified inspector, somebody that's on the payroll, to come out and evaluate, because I'm a layman. I don't know the severity of a fall of a 10-foot wall that wobbles. There's a lot of dangerous things that are going on in the easement. The project itself has been stopped until such time as that they deal with the city with these matters, and I believe that the city bears a responsibility to not just the people living now, but for the posterity, those that follow, that if there's any violations in that easement, that they need to be corrected. And if it's found to be safe, it needs to be endorsed by the city, and if any accident happens there, it has to be fully funded by their negligence. And for the city to gamble with the public right of way, as it's doing by not inspecting fully and completely until today, what they've done is they've put the liability of a risk upon themselves, and not the applicant for the remodel, and in doing so, somebody has to be held accountable. And it's my participation that not demands, but expects the city to act responsibly. In situations where remodels occur, where walls wobble and waiver over the undocumented workers as they have shown up, they need to be in an area where if there's any injury to them, that they are covered. These people that come to this country and get work in cities like Brisbane that allows for this type of development and the prostitution of the property by not holding themselves at a higher altitude and force whatever laws that they make upon themselves, as they do with the citizenship, and not drive around with wrecked cars and expect the public to take the dents out of theirs. We should look at our public property, and we should examine it, and we should make a determination that's based on intelligence, and remove the risk for people who barely know our language. And that's what I would ask our city attorney to look into and not make a hasty decision about something that has been in existence and in grave need of repair for 73 years, or 72 years, as is clearly marked on the street. It's a liability that the city must not shrug.
Thank you. Not being familiar with this, I don't want to comment on it, and I think we should allow the city attorney time to comment on this also at a later meeting, and I'm sure he'll get back to you with it.
In the meantime, I would suggest that danger be realized for the examination of our building inspector today, and he should make that discerning inspection and base his decision upon fact, and on the idea is that bear the responsibility of that wall before you allow anyone to walk over it and much less shove timbers eight by eights, 30 feet long, on both sides of that wall. It needs to be corrected.
Thank you. Next slip is from Sonia Garnett.
Hi, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here from Academy of Art University, and I use the softball field that's over on Mission Blue. And I'm just mostly here to invite the public out to our games and to stop in, and we're really proud to be in Brisbane. I actually played there when I was at San Francisco State, and now I just took over the program at Academy of Art. We're excited to use the facility. I love it here. It's a great town. When I played before, we would have people come out to our games and bring cookies and come support our games, and we just held a clinic for some San Francisco softball players about a month ago, and there were about 50 girls to show up. So I invite anyone who's interested in softball to come poke their heads in, and if there's any softball players in the area that would like a clinic, we're happy to reach out and share our knowledge and support the city as well, in any way we can.
When do you have your games?
Our first game is going to be, I believe, February 23rd at home, and we have a whole schedule up online at artuathletics.com.
Great, thank you. I'm glad you can make use of the facilities.
Thank you all.
Yeah, you know, Sonia, maybe if you could share the schedule with our city clerk and maybe put it on our website.
That would be great. That would be great.
And what ages is it for?
This is college. So we're Academy of Art University.
Great.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Next slip is from Michael Barnes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. It was interesting hearing about the CAFER again. I have a passing knowledge of city finance, and one of the things I noticed is the city doesn't have enough money for a skate park, so I have a check for another $1,000 from the sale of T-shirts and hoodies bearing the image of the Brisbane Skate Park graffiti.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
And also, I was on the council that purchased the Five Star Cafe site. I think we did that with low and moderate income housing funds, and it strikes me that a library on that site is a great idea. Thank you.
Next slip is from Barbara Ebel.
I wanted to speak on a couple of things. One is that we are also interested in the skate park, and in order to prevent the skate park from becoming a concrete desert, my husband and I would like to pledge to support, to put in a tree, if a space can be accommodated. We will pay for that tree, and we will pay for some of the, at least the initial upkeep of that tree, preferably on the south side, so that the kids who never seem to get their sunscreen on can enjoy at least a little bit of shade while they're enjoying their skating. And I will formalize that, do whatever I need to formalize that, but we wanted to provide a tree for the skate park. Also, I wanted to speak about the CCA and the library. I don't know, are we doing that now, or are we doing that later?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, but this is the comment period?
This was the open comment.
Regarding the library, I feel strongly that a larger library is really, really needed by this community. I am one of those people that's whittling away at the general fund with my library request fees. I think I request two or three things a week. And that, to me, the fact that 90% of the materials I need are coming on in our library alone says to me that our library is not adequate. If my son has a book report, and we need to go pick up some information, if I don't think to do that ahead of time on in our library alone, it's not going to be there. Okay? So we really, these are just two anecdotal reasons that I feel this community does need a bigger library. that I feel this community does need a bigger library. I was wondering if the city had considered renovating the current building, moving the community center somewhere nearby and allowing the library to take up both floors?
Barbara, these are items that we'll talk about when the library comes up before us in the agenda, so then they're cohesive.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering. I shouldn't talk about that now. I should come back.
Correct.
Okay. So I will do that. I'm sorry. I did not understand that.
That's okay. But while you're standing there, I did want to say thank you for writing the letter on behalf of the OSEC about the supporting San Bruno Mountain Watch and the planned priority conservation areas. So I wanted to thank you that while you're here and before we get into the meat of the other matters.
Certainly. Thank you. I'll see you in a moment.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak in items that are not on the agenda? So moving forward, we come to the consent calendar.
Could I just point out one thing?
Yes.
That we have two letter As. So we probably need to, as I see it, so we probably need to re-letter the items there. So for the record. So you see what I mean on the agenda? Yeah. So therefore, when we start talking about different items, we probably should use the new letters because that's going to be changed, I presume, in order to avoid confusion.
Why don't we do A1 and A2, so we keep the others?
Whatever the city clerk thinks is best. I don't know.
That sounds like a good idea.
If it works for you?
Yep. So we have seven items on the consent calendar, and I have notes of correction on at least four of them. So are there any items that?
I read both your and Lori's additions, and I'm fine with it.
Well, actually, there's, I just had sent some edits to the November 20 minutes, and they didn't get in in time. So you can pass that down. So we'll need to discuss at least item A1.
So basically, it looks like we have corrections to all the minutes, all the items, except for item D. Is that correct? So the only thing that we are not making a change to is item D?
What about the 5K run? Would we make a change to that?
Yes.
We are. Okay. All right.
Is there a change to the December 6 minutes?
No. Oh, item A2, I don't see any changes also. So D and A2 are still, unless someone else has a change on those.
Okay, so we're removing A1, C, and D off the agenda?
A1, B, C, E, and F.
Taking F off the agenda?
Wait. What's being removed? A2, B, and, I mean, A1, C, and D are being removed?
I think there, I think we can, I think we can approve item A2 and D. I think everything else has some sort of correction.
E and F, E and F have corrections?
E and F have corrections. Okay.
That came in the email today, right? And it should be on the DS2, right?
F for sure.
So there are corrections.
Not E.
That's what I thought, too. Not E. I thought it was F, yeah.
It's F, yeah. The Mothers of Brisbane co-sponsorship.
Right.
Yeah.
I had a question on E, but I'll be happy to leave it on there. So.
So then, there's no changes to A2, B, or E?
There are changes to.
A2.
D and E.
D and E.
B. B is in, oh, D?
Lori had changes on B.
On B. B is in boy. B is in Brisbane. Okay, so A2, D, and E. D is in?
And E.
And E. Okay, motion to approve A2. D is in door, and E is in Edward.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that, so, I'm sorry. These, these changes, Lori, on A2?
Okay, so A2.
Wait a minute.
No, A1, November 20th minutes. Okay.
Approved A2. I did have a change on the front page. I read your guys' changes, and I concur with them. I just have one minor quibble on the front page on two places. That would be under the call to order, says representatives from the local chapter of the Veterans of Foreign War, and then on a strike presented thee, and then say color guard, and then add posted the colors. So I'd read representatives from the local chapter of veteran foreign wars, color guard posted the colors, and led flag salute. That, the rest, that's fine. And then under presentation, on the second sentence, I want to strike presenting. And then on the third sentence, add posting the colors after color guard, so that it reads more correctly. And I gave those changes to Sherri, so.
And Lori, did you want to go over your changes?
Sure. So, I think you had changes also, but I'll mention mine first. So this was on page six regarding the housing element. As you recall from the last meeting, Ray had suggested adding comments that detailed the reasons for his no vote on that matter, his objections. And so I went back and reviewed the video because I wanted to make sure it was complete. And I watched, I took notes on what, Terry, what you had said. And so I've added that into it so that it's understandable for the record why each of you voted the way you did on that matter.
I have no problem with what I said. I think that it, that's fine.
I haven't seen it, but if you're fine with it, it's fine with me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I tried to pass them down.
That was the intent.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I thought you just didn't have enough room, and you were just overlapping on my papers.
Okay, motion to approve A1.
The other changes that I had made was, and they're included on the, on the staff changes, was just to add a couple corrections to the name and, and change how people were listed on their, on their notes on how they, when they were speaking. So you made a motion with the changes?
Yeah, with changes.
Move approval as amended?
That's a second.
That's a second?
That works.
No, I mean, that's the second.
That's the second. You made the motion. You made the second?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then on item C?
So for this matter, on page four, I went back and reviewed my notes, and I noted there were two additional public comments. This was on the 7,000 Marina appeal, one by Seth Hanley, the applicant's architect, and one by Megan Keough, Brisbane resident. So I've added that in for completeness.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on the co-sponsorship of the 5K fun run, item E, I just had a question.
Are we skipping?
We haven't done all the minutes yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking that was one that we had approved. So item D, the December 18 minutes?
Okay, so this was my comments is, again, on page four, this was item C regarding the changes to the municipal code regarding park and rec commissioner holding two offices. I added in that there was actually a motion made. It's a three to one vote.
Okay. Any other changes?
Motion to approve as amended?
As a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And on the co-sponsorship, item E of the 5K fun run, if I find my notes, I'll find why I had a question.
I concur with all the changes.
My question was, they're asking for, and this may be a question for staff, that they're asking for sponsorship and that they are going to have public works. The report says public works to provide security. I just wanted clarification on what public works would be doing as security.
Not security in the context that we think of for police, but. Well, I didn't draft that report, ma'am, but what public works and the police department will be doing is providing traffic control. So maybe they mean in that sense, safety and security for the racers as they're crossing. There's two intersections and two roads they have to cross.
Okay. Well, good luck with the, with the fun run. Is this a morphing of the Zippy race?
It is. It is. The traffic logistics out in industrial park were, were more intense. And we were looking for a location that was easier to manage. Also, since it's going to be out at Sierra Point, it's a flatter course, it'll be a lot faster, and much more scenic, too. We're going to try and take advantage of, well, we are taking advantage of the Bay Trail. So, and we're doing it as a fundraiser for the schools.
Is it for the elementary school only or for the district?
For the school district.
Okay.
Yes. And so, yeah, since you brought it up, Madam Mayor, I'll just make a plug for the race. It's March 22. And the flyers are going out, and hope to get a lot of folks from town participating in the race.
It'll rain that day, you know.
You can run rain or shine.
Okay, motion to approve item E?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Cliff, I think you need to abstain on this one, though.
I guess you're right. Yes.
You're the applicant.
You're the applicant. Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and on item F, the Mother of Brisbane's Clothing Swap, I had just wanted clarification on the fiscal impacts and the attachment because they were missing. So staff has included those now. And with that, I would ask for an approval.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, in the, in the interest of being fair, this is for the Mothers of Brisbane Clothing Swap that will be held on February 22 from 12 to 5. And I believe that it is open to all members of the public. Thank you. So we got through the consent calendar with some consent. And now we'll move on to new business. And we will start with item A, which is consider approval of an agreement with NSIGHT to provide computer system maintenance. And can we have the staff report?
Sure. Back in 2000, the city hired NSIGHT to work with us to develop our infrastructure backbone for our network. Since that time, we have used them on a variety of projects, which include when we moved buildings across the street while we were doing the remodel here, they developed that, they helped us move the network over and back. And that was a very efficient process for us. They are also providing us Monday assistance with Albert to keep the network and the computers in City Hall up and running. What we have noticed over time, though, is that we are beginning to have some ongoing issues that can be handled better remotely than can be handled onsite, one of which is the constantly backing up our network. So one of the things that we should be doing is backing up our network every night, and we should be storing those backups remotely. What we would do with NSIGHT is they would do the backup remotely. The main backup would be held in Milpitas, but they also have another secure backup site in Phoenix. So that would provide us more secure backup than just backing up our tape and leaving it onsite or leaving it someplace in Brisbane as we do now. So that's one of the things that we are looking for. We also spend a lot of staff time going around to computers and making sure that all the security patches are up to date. This is something that can, once again, be done more remotely than it has been in the past. So this would be another example of where NSIGHT can help us save staff time. And so we can do more advanced issues. The other issue, other areas are some, you know, very similar to what the police department has talked about in when they were looking at their system, helping us with some of our infrastructure issues with, with it, providing 24/7 service to us. That way Albert doesn't always have to be onsite if we have questions about how to use Word, how to use other products. One of the areas that encompasses all this, that makes this easier for us, is that we are looking to, we're using utility telephone to get a faster network connection. So as we do more things and more items happen remotely, it's a bigger drain on our connection on the internet. More uploads, more downloads. So one of, and I think we just got this completed, Albert, the utility telephone fiber connection?
Uh, fiber.
Almost. We're about to be connected. So with the utility telephone, we are going to have a fiber connection to City Hall, and that will increase our speed to a 50-megabyte upload-download asynchronous, which means that it is both up and down. So that will help us be able to do a lot of this work remotely where we can have quickly get information up and down through the internet to fix computers, to monitor computers. So that's one of the reasons why we're able to do that at this point in time. Other areas that we will be working with NSIGHT on is our spam filtering. I know we still, you know, that's one of the things that all companies suffer from. We have spam filtering right now. So what we do is replace the spam filtering we have and use NSIGHT, which is a slightly better spam filtering. They'll also help us with managing our antivirus to make sure that we're up to date. And that's one of the things that we don't have, we won't have to be doing computer by computer at times. We can do it all computers at one time to make sure they're all up to date at the same time. The reason, we looked at Nevtech, which is the computer company that the police department has used. The prices were very, were similar, but we've had very good working relationship with NSIGHT from a City Hall perspective. They have provided us top-level service, and that's the reason why we thought that they would be a better choice for working with the City Hall network. Then Nevtech would be, the cost to us is $3,300 a month for all of our computers in City Hall, working and the fire department and the marina. This compares to a similar type of a contract with Nevtech for about $2,300 for the police department. Police department has some other slightly different issues. As you remember, they have the uploads and downloads of the videos that Nevtech was going to help them with, and they're doing a very good job with that. That's why there's slightly more per machine. The contract also calls for a 2.5% inflator on it every year. This is within line with what the current inflation rate is, right? This year's inflation for the annual was 2.6%. So staff thought the 2.5 seemed an appropriate amount of money going forward. If the inflation rate is vastly different in the future, if it goes down or goes up, I'm sure that number would be renegotiated as needed. With that, we'd make the recommendation that you approve the agreement. And I think just one other thing to note is that Albert is still our onsite person. He still, he works for us. He's the person that works with NSIGHT to make sure that NSIGHT is performing the duties that they've, that they have said that they're going to do. So we're not changing that relationship.
Thank you. Any questions from the council, Lori?
Sure, thank you. So you said Albert will remain the main contact. So then if, if employees have any computer issues, is there any time where they would be dealing with the contact person at Nevtech or NSIGHT?
There would be. I mean, if Albert is not onsite and they need help, or if Albert says, you know, that's something that you can talk directly with NSIGHT about. I mean, the concern is that, you know, we would like to have Albert know of the computer issues that are happening. So that way, if there is an ongoing, if there's multi, if. So that way, if there is an ongoing, if there's multi, if multiple people having similar issues, as opposed to having Insight fix them one at a, one time at a time, to deal with the underlying problem that's happening and have Albert work with Insight to figure out what that underlying problem is.
Okay.
But there would be times when Albert's not available, that this provides us another level of availability for IT staff that we don't, that we would not have at this time.
And how would, how would employees know how to contact that person?
And as we, after we signed the contract, we would inform everybody through emails, through discussion. I mean, we're a small enough city that it's fairly easy. I think one other, um, issue when we talk about backing up our computer system, um, I, I know you had emailed the question. So if it's on our network, we back it up. So there are people who keep files on their hard drive, so those are, individual hard drives are not backed up ever because that's not part of the network.
Okay.
So if you have files that are on your iPad, they do not get backed up through our system until they get put onto our network system. But all of our emails are backed up every night. So that, because they are on the network system.
Okay, you said both in Milpitas and in Phoenix?
Um, yes.
Okay. And with the police department, did you say that they're under a separate?
They are, they are under Nevtech. That came forward to the city council, I think, three months ago, two months ago.
And they will continue?
They will continue with Nevtech.
Okay.
Nevtech is more, has geared themselves to working with police departments.
Okay.
They have a much better understanding of the intricacies of the security needed to work with the police department privacy file, files. And, and, you know, with Insight, you know, our information is not, has the same level of FBI requirement.
And what about our fire department? What system is that on?
They are, they will be under the Insight.
Okay, well, that'll also be fiber.
Yes. We, we are connecting a 2-megabyte up-down directly to the fire department, which will help them deal with their training videos. One of the problems that they're having with the slower connection is that they're, they do a lot of their training over video at this point, video training, and with slower connection, they've not been able to do that as well. So the 2-megabyte up-down is going to give them that ability.
Okay. And I had asked you, um, by email about, um, voice-over IP phone.
Yes.
So, um, you had said that's something that would be explored once this is installed.
Once, once our, once our upgraded fiber is installed, we are going to look at our phone system.
And what's the timeframe for installation of fiber?
It should be placed by the end of, uh, this month.
By the end of February.
Okay.
Early March.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
If we, if he keeps talking, it might be middle of March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, actually, Stuart, you said, um, the tape or the, the tape backup would be off-site to DataSafe?
Well, what we would have is, I don't know if it would be so much as a tape backup, and we do have Dale Hoffman, who's actually been with, worked with Insight and with us since 2000. He could probably explain their system better. It was, it's more of a nowadays-called, I would imagine, a cloud type of a backup, where we don't send a physical tape anymore. It's just that they mirror the system in Milpitas, and then it's also mirrored again in Phoenix. So there is two different sections, two different areas where it's mirrored.
Okay.
Do I have that terminology right, Dale? Oh, good.
Yeah, I, I know, um, in, at least in the corporate world, it used to be that, uh, insurance requirement, you know, you had to do the backup, the tape backup, and it had to be sent every day to, you know, a place like DataSafe or something like that. And we're self-insured, but the whole purpose is this, you don't want to lose your data.
Right.
On page, um, I want to say three, uh, three of the support agreement. See if the page was not numbered.
They aren't numbered, yeah.
Is it the one the planning strategy and program management planning?
It's the, no, it's the one, uh, I'm sorry, it's the one under managed backup. Down at the bottom, they're talking about, you know, I mean, it goes through, uh, what Insights managed backup service includes. It says, uh, 2 to 8 terabytes of tapeless redundant storage.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the back, we talked about managed backup, it says includes 50-gigabyte block of off-site backup, and then they talk about, uh, what's the difference here?
I'll let Dale, if you can.
Because, I mean, you're talking 2 to 8 terabytes of, uh...
Please introduce yourself.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm Dale Hoffman. I'm the senior analyst with Insight. We're headquartered in Berkeley. We've been in business for about 12 years. I've been with the company for over 18 years. When we talk about managed backup, our process is to help take the data that's on the file servers here, locally package it on the file servers. We talk about a device that's 2 to 8 terabytes.
Could you move the microphone a little closer?
Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
We will leverage the systems that are in the city to store and package the nightly backup and compress the data onto the, the city's systems. This is what we're talking about in the 2 to 8-terabyte range. This data then is used at night using the internet connection that they're putting into place to move this data encrypted and compressed to our data center in Milpitas, where we package it on our secure and redundant data vaults. We have a significant enterprise infrastructure there that's designed for this, and this data is packaged and maintained, and that's where it's stored and archived. It, we will take full backups in place, and then each night we will do incremental backups. And the software then will help reconstruct it in the event of data loss here at the city. So being in Milpitas, if we need to forklift the data, it's a term that we use, to bring all the data at one time, we can bring it down here and restore, or we can work with Albert to restore individual files or directories that are lost on the networks. If we lose file servers completely, we can help restore the file server back to its state, its last-known state, which would be last night, putting the full backups and the incrementals together. This data that sits in our data center that's packaged each night and is continued to archive then is replicated nightly to our secondary data center in, in Phoenix, which allows us to maintain a level of redundancy. So what we're talking about is moving away from the idea of tape backup and physical media that degrades to put it onto enterprise-class systems that's fully redundant, both here in Milpitas close by and in Phoenix outside of the state and outside of the current earthquake zones. The data centers are secured by biometrics, only a very limited, uh, group of people from our company are allowed access. I've been with the company 18 years, and I don't have access to the data centers. It's restricted to our network operations group and, uh, the system operators that maintain it, and only a few people physically get to the servers. So there, we really maintain them more remotely. The data centers are secured with redundant backup, redundant internet connectivity. We maintain redundant data sets within the data center, and we protect the networks with redundant firewalls within the data center.
Yeah. I, I was, I was just curious about the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On-site storage.
Okay.
Right, I think the difference is the 2 to 6 terabytes is what we, what we have in onsite, whereas theirs, their 50-gigablocks, gigabit blocks would be their compressed, that 2.6 would compress down based on their compression, compression algorithm.
Yes, it has to do with the costing model. So we look at the amount of data that you have, compress it, because files are compressible, and then it's measured in 50-gigabit increments.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't gather that in here, so, okay. That makes sense, then. Because I see, there's a big difference there.
We take an enormous amount of data and compress it down, and it's maintained in a compressed format. And then by using incrementals, the little bits of data that changes each night, then it's, it's folded together with the software to recreate the data in the event of loss.
Okay, yeah. That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If you want, if you want to speak, Albert, you should go to the front.
We'll let you.
Yeah. Albert?
Thank you. I think there may be some confusion here between, uh, when data is stored, it's measured in bytes, megabytes, gigabytes. When it's transmitted, it's measured, excuse me, it's measured in bits. So you have megabytes, giga, megabits, gigabits. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, I follow.
Unfortunately, people who say, who speak about it sometimes confuse themselves, you know, the words get crossed up. You say bytes instead of bits and bits instead of bytes.
Well, they're using the acronym TB, um...
Well, that's...
Terabytes, right? Well, they didn't say bytes, it's just TB and GB.
If it's a small B, it's bits. If it's a big B, it's bytes.
Yeah, they're both, they're both big, they're both big Bs.
But the difference is the compression, uh, algorithm that's used in order to take a lot of data and, and squish it.
Okay. No, I get it.
I don't have any questions.
No questions? How about you?
I have just one thing I wanted Stuart to, to reiterate, just so it's, it's clear publicly. So how much is this going to cost us on an annual basis?
Um, about $36,000.
Okay.
$3,300 a month.
Okay, so in effect, then we approve the contract, that's an expenditure of, of that amount?
Yes, and that'll be part of, we'll include it as part of the budget in next fiscal year, and the difference that's needed this year will be, you know, part of the mid-year update.
Okay. Now I have a small, little personal question. One of the problems that I've had, well, using the city email with my iPad, is if I try to forward anything that has an attachment, forget it. You won't do it. Server can't handle it. And so what I want to know is, are we doing anything about that problem?
We're gonna sit, we're gonna sit here in stunned silence.
It takes weeks.
Let me, let me get with Insight and Albert and see if there's way, because I, I too have that same problem at times. So let me get with Insight and Albert and see if there's ways that we can better compress the data. I mean, what it is, when you're trying to send it over the cell or your network, it just is, the information is too big to go. So the question is, how do we get, work, do that workaround? And I'm not quite sure what that is, so I'll, we will work on that.
Well, eventually it'll go. Sometimes it's weeks.
I, I mean, I have that problem where I, you know, get back information that says it has not been sent, so I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Albert's about to whisper in my ear.
Or he's hiding.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the, it's the, it's how the iPad connects with the internet.
Right.
And we, you know, we will continue to see if there's search for solutions. Because if, you know, I have no problem sending anything over my, when you're here, sending it. It's not our server, it's...
It's the chain.
It's the, it's the ether that we all live in.
Thank you. I have one question. Uh, on the, on this, uh, contract, they have a area that talks about travel expenses and, and what their in-contract is. Is there, are onsite visits included with this project, or is it, or are we paying for the travel on top of the monthly fee?
Well, this is more of a remote, this, I mean, their travel is part of their overall, all of their contracts. So this one, there's, should be very little travel connected with it, other than when we do the orig, the initial setup. So that would be in addition to their monthly fee. But we have other contracts with them where we, you know, we use them for 10-hour, eight hours a day, and, you know, there's a portion that there is a travel cost to that, and that's, we fold that into the overall cost.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's...
That was my only question.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. You do?
So, um, Stuart, you know, just looking at that same page, does, does Insight work with any police departments? You do not?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we, they, the, our police department looked at Insight when they were looking at this, but Nevtech has such a stellar reputation for police departments and working with them with the FB, you know, what the FBI protocols were. That's why the police department went with Nevtech.
Okay. All right.
I believe it was the case that virtually every city in San Mateo County is with Nevtech. It's almost as if they have a, a specialization, or you might even call it monopoly in, uh, serving the police department.
Right, I mean, right, I mean, once you understand the protocols that you need in order to work within the, the Department of Justice system, it helps you create that monopoly within that system.
So you made a motion?
Well, I, I was about to make a motion. Yeah. Well, only in my head. I don't think I verbalized it, but that's pretty good. I mean, uh, um, I, I can't wait to see the, until the fiber optics hooked up, so, but anyway, I'm, be honored to make a motion to approve an agreement with Insight to provide computer system maintenance.
Second.
And we have a second? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we go back to Stuart, and, and thank you for coming to, to share your information with us. Oh, I'm not... It brings us to consider adoption of resolution 2015-04 to set up a trust with PARS for our OPEB liability.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Can I, can I, you know, I know we did this, but I, I'm kind of assuming that most of people here are for the library. Is that a lot of people here for the library?
Yeah.
Maybe move that up front, you know, and then, and...
Yeah, that's really impressive.
Unless we want to torture them to stay.
Torture them?
Well, you know, it's educational.
I was hoping that the pressure of having them here would move us along.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, it's your call, but...
Yeah. Well, I'm okay with, uh, moving it ahead.
Yeah, I, I would recommend moving F up.
Yeah.
Before B.
If the mayor doesn't mind.
Yeah, it's your call.
The council's, council's pleasure. We can move item F forward if you'd like.
Okay with the city attorney?
So then we would consider plan, the library planning, site selection, and funding concept, and consider directing staff to hire a design architect.
Okay. Make the presentation from the podium tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor and, uh, Council. I'm glad to have the opportunity tonight to get us, um, caught up to speed and kind of, uh, getting us to, hopefully, the next steps in terms of the bright Brisbane library planning process. So just as a reminder, the, um, conversation around a new library is, um, part of the city council's adopted, uh, work plan. It's item 13A. It's been identified as a, as a project of priority for 2014, and that's why we're here tonight. In terms of the history of the, uh, the library, uh, the current library was, um, built and operated, or, um, opened in 1981. About 20 years later, we started a process, uh, to, um, look at the potential of a new library. And 2001, we hired a consultant, um, by the name of Catherine Page and Associates. They did a fairly comprehensive outreach to not only members of the, of the citizens of the community, but also, um, businesses, um, talking to, uh, working with the library staff at that time. And they came up with, um, a fairly ambitious, um, plan of, that would have a, about a 16,000-square-foot library. At that time, we had no, um, discussion really on the table about where that might be with, there's some thoughts about it, but, uh, we really hadn't, um, focused on it onsite. But that started to get us starting to thinking about a site. Um, and what I don't have in here is that in 2003, and I think, uh, former council member Barnes, um, made mention of that tonight, we, uh, purchased, uh, the Five Star, um, Cafe slash LT Clark site. So we get all the, the, the history of the site, uh, those are at least the last two, two kind of owners and users of the site that I'm aware of. That's on Visitation Avenue. We'll get a little bit more into that as we get further into the, uh, to this report. But we purchased that property in 2003 with affordable housing funds that were then available through our redevelopment agency. Um, and the early kind of thinking and concept, uh, at that time was a project that would have a downstairs library and a second floor, perhaps a third floor, of, of affordable housing, having anywhere from, you know, I'd say 8 to 10 units of housing, something along that nature. Um, as we all know, um, a couple of things happened that kind of derailed that concept. As we all know, a couple of things happened that kind of derailed that concept. One of them certainly was the recession of 2000, the early 2000s, and then, of course, the Great Recession later on that basically brought development to a halt in the, in the area. Affordable housing funds were directly affected by lack of new development in the redevelopment agency areas. So the funds kind of stalled. And then in 2011, '12, somewhere around there, the governor and legislature and their infinite wisdom decided to make a decision that got rid of affordable housing funds. So that pretty much derailed the kind, the concept of a mixed use with affordable housing and, and library. So anyway, in 2007, the next circle up there, we brought Ms. Page back in to do an analysis, and we had her kind of focus on the Five Star LT Clark site, which is about 11,000 square foot site. And at that time, we had had the beginning of discussions and beginning of the thought process of maybe possibly purchasing the Eagles building, which is next door, kind of catty corner in the, in the corner there. The discussions with the Eagles went on for some number of years, much to the delight of my public works director, who was leading that discussion with them. And we had very good discussions with them, but it just never bore fruit. It was a complicated potential deal, and it just in the end was not something that they were interested in moving forward with. And it was probably something that would have been very problematic for the city to move forward with. So I think for both parties, it just was not a, not, just, just didn't work out. So anyway, in 2007, we did kind of focus on, on that site. And our consultant came back and put together a project of around 9,000 square feet with a second story that could go up to maybe 11,000 square feet. So that's kind of where we were in the 2007 period of time. Then, of course, the bottom fell out in the economy. We kind of put any kind of, you know, capital project of that nature on, on hold while we were dealing with more serious problems of just running the day-to-day operations of the city. And we also, as we'll get into more here in terms of the funding sources that are available today, although those funding sources were identified back in that period of time, the money hadn't really yet come into the fund. So we weren't really able to move forward, forward at that point in time. 2014 came around, and I think we started to kind of ramp this process up again. We also started to narrow in, not only on a site, but also the amount of dollars that we thought we had to work with, and we'll get into that a little bit further. And we went back to the county library staff, who are here tonight, Anne Marie and her staff, and they can speak to the building plan, which is one of the documents in your, in your, in your package here. And we said that we think we can afford a building in the neighborhood of 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. And that was based on the per foot cost of a library that was recently built in Portola Valley, which ended up being about $500 a square foot. That's exclusive, of course, of any land purchase. So we're saying that we've got a couple of different sites in town. If we own the land, you know, we think we can afford a 5,000 to 7,000 square foot building. So we kind of had the convergence of a fiscal parameters of what we could afford to spend, a site that we thought, a site or two that we thought might work, and then also just kind of, you know, what that meant in terms of the square footage. So that's where we, we've been in 2014. As you know, you have a council subcommittee, the facilities subcommittee, that has been looking at this issue throughout the calendar year of 2014. And what we're able to do is kind of narrow, like I just indicated on, to three kind of core issues. What would, what's the appropriate budget for a new library based on the realistic funding sources that we have? With the consideration of that budget and resources, what would make sense in terms of a building plan? And again, that's when we went to the library staff and said, "Look at a 5,000 or so square foot building. What would you recommend in terms of a, of a building plan?" And then we kind of started to systematically go through the potential building, potential locations, which have, for the most part, been currently owned city property with one exception, and I will, I will go through that here in a minute. So the sources of funding. There are three and potentially four, and I will kind of verbally talk about the fourth one tonight. But there's three that are in your staff report and three that are listed on this, on this sheet here. One is the facilities fee. This is a fee that we negotiated with the developer, the Northeast Ridge, back in, I want to say, time flies, but it's been probably close to 10 years ago. Something in that nature. So this was kind of their last phase of their development. It just didn't impact all of their development. It only really impacted the last some, 70 some odd units. Basically, there is a facilities fee that comes into the city on a per-unit basis at the time of the building permit. All the building permits have been issued now for that project. And so we have all the money in the fund, about $1.75 million.
Nice.
So the second major source of funds is, we had a voter-approved capital license, capital fund from the business license in 2008. That is generating currently about $300,000 a year. That can be used for any one-time capital need of the city. We are currently dedicating about $94,000 a year that we are repaying to the housing fund. I talked earlier about that we had bought the Five Star LT Clark site back from, with housing funds back in 2003. State law required us to do something with that within 10 years in terms of affordable housing. Since we really weren't able to do a project, we then had the city buy the LT Clark Five Star site from the housing fund. So we are paying that off over time, and that's a $94,000 a year cost, which leaves about $200,000, $206,000 roughly, a year in potential revenue from that fund. That can either be used on one-time projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, or as we're suggesting here, we could leverage those dollars. We believe that for $130,000 of those dollars, you could generate about $1.3 million. Of course, that all depends on when you hit the market and what the rates are at that particular point in time. So the final item, actually the penultimate item, I got one other that I wanted to talk about tonight, is that we have made a request to San Mateo County, who has Measure A funds, which are sales tax-based. It was a voter-approved ballot measure in 2012. The past year, the county did approve library projects and, for construction in Daly City, Fair Oaks, and Half Moon Bay. They, not that they paid all of that amount, but they, they contributed to those projects. When we had discussions with the library JPA staff, they're, they certainly encouraged us to put an application in. So the, the letter intent that went in was co-signed by myself and Anne Marie Despain, the library exec, or library director. The county is requesting in applications that there be a minimum 50-50 split between the county and, in our case, the city. We thought it would strengthen our case if we up that a little bit. And so our letter of intent actually commits to a two to one, which I think we can easily make, given the dollars that we've been talking about. I think we'll actually do better than two for one. This past week, we invited our supervisor, Adrian Tessier, up to Brisbane. And Anne Marie and myself, Randy, and Francisco from the library had an opportunity to spend some time with her. And she was very supportive of what we're doing. We actually had her come in to the library, which I think spoke volumes. And she indicated that just being there, she completely understood what, what the issue was, what we were trying to do, and, you know, that was meritorious in her mind. There's a couple of things that she suggested to us. The county has a program called The Big Lift that you may or may not be available or aware of. I'm kind of just a little bit aware of it. I know Cliff, in conversations with him, is, is very aware of it, and maybe the rest of you are. But essentially, it is aimed at childhood literacy issues. And so we've talked a little bit about that and how our new library could fit into that. And I think Anne Marie could probably speak to that much better than I could. But Anne Marie's going to be putting together some statistics and information about that for the supervisor to kind of help strengthen our, our case. The other thing that supervisor Tessier suggested or asked us to consider, which I think is infinitely reasonable and actually makes a lot of sense in our case, is that if we'd be willing to take the doll, or we'd be willing to receive dollars over a period of time. So that maybe it's a million dollars, but it's not all in one year. It's over maybe a three-year, four-year period of time. Given the, you know, the process of actually building a, a structure of this nature and, you know, having to go out and get an architect and design it, and then later on, doing your bits and specs, and then bidding that out and actually building it, it, that is a good three-year process.
It's not going to happen this year?
No. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about, about the potential timing. But, so I told her that I thought that that would be something we could certainly work with. Now, that's something she's going to have to work with her fellow supervisors on. She wasn't quite sure exactly how that would work from a county budgeting standpoint. But anyway, she felt that that would be advantageous to us. The county, so that's kind of all the good part of this. The, or the kind of the dampening aspect of the county Measure A funds is that they have received requests, I think, for something like $380 million. And it's just way oversubscribed compared to, to what they, what they have. So they're going to have a very competitive process. They're going to have a very, going to have to really figure out what their priorities are. They are meeting next Tuesday afternoon at 1:30. I plan on attending that meeting at the supervisor's request to, and then potentially speaking to our project. But they're going to have to start the process of really kind of identifying priorities and how they're going to go about spending this. So we'll see how that plays out. It's definitely, I think, something that's got some potential. But, you know, at this point, it's not something that we can necessarily be assured of. The final source of funds is that we have a capital fund that goes back probably to the 1980s, maybe early 1990s. And it had to do with some channel improvements that were required of the, then Brookfield Development at the Northeast Ridge, that's now the coal development. And that, there was a $1.4 million that the developer provided to the city for those channel improvements. City staff has looked at that over the years, going back to the, you know, a couple of public works directors before Randy. I had conversations with them, and Randy and his staff have confirmed that over the years, that we think that there's, the project that it's needed is probably a lot less than what was originally thought of. And so that there should be significant amount of dollars left out of that $1.4 million that can be then used for other capital funds. I'll work with staff, you know, from, I just got some information today. I'll continue to work with staff to try to hone down what those, what those numbers are. So that's another potential funding source in this, in this mix. So this is just a, notwithstanding the last thing I said, but this is the, the adding up of those dollars. So it's about $1,750 from the facilities fee from the Northeast Ridge, about $1.3 million in the business license fee, assuming, you know, $130,000 a year is dedicated to it. I put Measure A there at $1 million, and then we have some other funds that, you know, could jump that number up a little bit. So we're in the neighborhood, I think it's, it's safe to say that we're in the neighborhood of around $4 million worth of revenues that we could potentially put to this project. So what, very rough sort of estimates, and working with, with Randy over the last year or so about the project design, project cost. We think that a 5,000 square foot building at $500 a square foot, plus 15% design and project administration, we would be in around $2.9 million. Again, this is assuming that it's on currently city-owned property. A 7,000 square foot building would be in the neighborhood of around $4 million. So anywhere from $2.9 to $4 million. And the 5 and 7,000 square feet come directly out of the building plan that the county library staff developed, so those are tied together. So that was actually the easy part of this. Now for the fun part. So we've been evaluating sites, going back and forth, in and out, and looking at different things. And actually, there's one other site on here that I didn't even, didn't even put on here. I can briefly speak to that. The four potential sites that we evaluated as a, as a subcommittee and the city staff, the first two, I think, we considered to be serious potential sites. They're both owned by the city. The Five Star LT Clark site is on Visitation Avenue. It's next to the current Eagles Club. The site is an L-shaped site that faces out on the Visitation Avenue, but also borders up to Monterey. And it has a total square foot of about 11,354 square feet. And again, is owned by the city. The Teen Center site is on San Bruno Avenue. It's about 7,000 square feet. It's owned by the city. It has got neighbors to each side, and obviously the street to the San Bruno side. Two other sites that we considered, but kind of dismissed over time based on other issues. One is the Skateboard Park Basketball Court site on Park Place. Back in October, the council identified this as the preferred site for the new Skateboard Park, basically the continued use of the Skateboard Park and the basketball court. So that, you know, took, took that out of the running for, for a library. And then we also, I think one of the earlier speakers was speaking to the, you know, "Why can't you just, or have you considered the existing library?" So we did. We, we put some time into, to looking at the existing library. The existing library is only 2,700 square feet. Of course, there's the downstairs portion to it that is heavily used by a number of community groups, not the least of which is Brisbane Dance Workshop and the Seniors Club. It is, again, a 30-year-old building. We looked at the potential of moving, of expanding to the back. Interestingly enough, the city received a grant back in the 1970s for that, and that required that to be a park. It was bought with, I believe they called them state water and conservation grants back in those days. Anyway, it was dedicated as a, as a permanent park site. If you could get the state legislature to agree to let you use it for some other site, presumably have to pay them back with interest, and you get the governor to sign it, you could put it into some other use. But that's a pretty heavy lift. So that's something that we, we just thought was pretty, you know, pretty much neglected the ability to be able to go into the back. We thought about possibly going to the next lot over, which is on the downhill side. That is a fairly good-sized lot. And of course, it all has frontage there on Visitation Avenue. And council member Conway approached the property owner, but he did not have, he and his family did not have any interest in selling it to the city. So that kind of negated, negated that as a, as an opportunity. Well, the one other site that I didn't put on here, just so, just because somebody might bring it up. We did briefly consider the downstairs space over at One San Bruno, which is that corner lot, that corner project, condo project. The down, the space is for commercial use. It was fairly expensive. I think it was, they were asking for something like $800,000. It was only 3,700 square feet, very low ceilings, all exposed utilities. So that would all have to be covered up. There's no, no bathrooms in there at all at this point. So we kind of. point. So we kind of, although we like, I think, we liked the location, and I think historically, going way back in time, there was a lot of thought about trying to connect the library with the, with the community park, that that was a good, nice mutual, or compatible uses. That site just was, or that particular building was just too small to seriously Okay. So in terms of the sites, the five-star LT Clark site, the pros to that site are that the city owns the site. The site is located along Visitation Avenue, which is our, our main thoroughfare through town, and has high visibility. The site is more than adequate in terms of space, 11,000-plus square feet, could easily accommodate a 5,000, 7,000-square-foot building on just a one, one-story building. I think you could also, and this is more of a design issue, but I think you could create some kind of interesting and nice park-like setting outside of the building, but on the site, not an active recreation use, but something that's more compatible with a, with a library, where people could read outside, or just have a kind of a quiet area. The cons, as we've, we identified for a number of years, is that the site's next to the Eagles, and there has been concerns about the compatibility of uses. I think that we feel that from, that the, to the extent that that's an incompatible use, we'll just have to take that into consideration of our design, and where we, where we have the entrance into the building, and how we try to guide people into the building. And that's just, you know, something we're going to have to keep in mind as we design it. The other consideration, which is neither a pro or a con at this point, but, you know, we certainly could keep in the back of our mind the acquisition of the Eagles site at some future point in time, when, if the, if and when the Eagles ever wanted to sell. And then we would have the fairly easily expandable site for a future, you know, expansion of the library. I'm thinking that's probably 20 years down the line, or maybe even further. But it would certainly be something, I think, to keep in mind going into the future. The Teen Center site, the pros, again, are that the city owns the site. The site is closer to the community park. I talked just a minute ago about the, kind of the historical conversation about the compatibility of park and library near each other. It's not directly connected to the light, to the park, but it is a little bit closer. The site has clear walking distances from both the schools, and near drop-off locations for the after-school bus, high school bus. The cons were that the site is relatively small. If we're going to do a 7,000-square-foot building, we definitely need two stories to be able to do that. It is surrounded. I put there that currently, the 23 Club is currently up for sale, heard Friday night that that closed. And so that has now been purchased by a private, private interest, who, as we understand, will be coming into the city to look at some different uses out for that, for the 23 Club in that area. The site is located on San Bruno Avenue as opposed to Visitation, so it's a little bit off of the, the main, the main drag of the city. Okay. In terms of next steps, what we're asking the council to do tonight, I think, is, is three things. One, and of course, you know, a project of this nature is always a matter of moving parts and a moving process. So we're not in a position right now to say, okay, this is our tied-down financing plan. But we are in a position to say that we've identified three or four different sources that could be used for financing, and that that looks, at this point in time, to be satisfactory in terms of being able to do a project. So if the council is comfortable with that, and moving forward with, with that is kind of the basis of the financing. The second is the acceptance of the proposed building plan submitted by the library staff. Again, a lot of the detail of that would be something that we would be working out through the design phase. And we'd certainly want the library and the library staff to be very involved with that. One of the things that's not in their plan, that, that might make sense for us to consider in the library, since we, between the library and the city, we have a fairly robust history archives, but we have no place to display it. We have no place for the public to come and see it and interact with it. And it would be nice, I think, if we could incorporate that into a building, in this case, the library, where the public would have access to it, and be able to use it, and read, and look at stuff. So that's a thought in terms of the design. The other thing is that we would ask the council to consider putting together a, a library planning committee. The committee would be consisting of groups and individuals in the community, such as the friends of the library. Other groups of the council identify the work with city staff, and on not only the process for hiring an architect, but also to work with the architect in terms of the design options that we would be looking at. And again, at this point, we would be saying that, you know, we've got a rough budget of what we can spend. We have a location of what we, where it would be, and we have a kind of a general building plan. So when we talk about kind of a process, we're not talking about starting at, you know, the beginning where everything's up for grabs. We're giving pretty firm direction in terms of what this is going to be. And then the direction to staff, the solicitor proposals for architectural services, if we can, the council is of the mind tonight, give staff the direction to start that process, we will go and start putting RFPs out to potential architectural individuals and firms, and then start that, start that process. And the final note, I would say, with regards to the architectural part of this, is that I think from a planning perspective, we have done about as much as we can do, absent starting to get a handle on what the building would actually look like. You know, the building is, you know, as you do the architectural work, you're going to drive down and really begin to know for sure your, your numbers in terms of what it's going to cost you. And you're going to be able to really kind of also know exactly what it is the building's going to function as, and how it's going to function, and what's going to be available in those, which are all very important issues in terms of ultimate city council approval of a, of a project. So that's the presentation on this. As I indicated, Anne Marie and her staff are here, and I would let them field any questions that have to do with how a library works. I'm fairly good at reading, but other than that, I couldn't really tell you too much about libraries.
Thank you. Any direct questions for, for Clay from the council at this time?
Yeah, there might be Clay, or, you know, I like to hear from the libraries.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did promise Anne Marie she didn't really have to make a presentation tonight. So if, or you have actual questions for her, I think she'll be ready to respond to that. So, but I'm sure she'll-
I have questions for staff first, actually.
Okay. Do you want him here, or is it for general staff?
I don't know who would answer, but we can start with you. So you had mentioned the facilities fees that is paid for, or was paid for by the homeowners that purchased homes up at the ridge, 20K per building permit being issued. So was that just with respect to the last phase, the 50 homes? Because-
I think, I think it was, I-
Are all of the-
No, it was not for all of them. And it was only for the single-family homes. And I think it was only for like, the last 70 or so.
And was that paid for by the homeowners, or by the developer?
Well, it was paid by the developer at the time of the building permit. So the fee was paid to us by the developer, correct.
Okay, okay. And the, the cost estimates, you had said that it assumes city-owned property. Does it take into account any demolition costs? For example, there's a building where the Five Star Cafe site sits.
Right. I think our anticipation is that, no, I would say these costs probably do not involve demolition costs at this point. I think our thought is probably that we're, we're going to probably want to come to you sooner than later than on the demolition, particularly the five-star site, which, you know, needs to be, needs to be torn down.
Good practice for the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, there are, I think Councilmember Miller brought to my attention some nonprofits that, that like to do this kind of work for the material. So, you know, I think there's some ways we can try to really reduce cost on that end.
Okay. And you had mentioned that there were some potential additional funds through leftover funds for channel improvements at the ridge. I'm curious, what, what were the channel improvements?
Well, they haven't been done yet.
Oh, okay.
So rather than trying to flail around at that issue tonight, I'll be more than happy to bring that back. I mean, we will be bringing that back to you as a project at some point, and probably, I'm guessing Randy, in the 2015, '16 budget. Yeah. So you'll, you'll see that.
And what amount are we looking at that might be left over?
I think the Deputy Public Works Director told me that tonight, the project's going to be in the 200,000 to 300,000.
It'll be any order of a million that'll be left over.
Yeah, there's roughly a million.
Okay. Okay. And I'll save my questions for the library director about Measure A issues, I suppose, or, I had questions about the big lift. What, what that-
Okay.
Is exactly, what that would mean in terms of our request, if it would be limiting the funds and the way they could be used.
Oh, okay. Probably not, but I'll let Anne Marie respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, community. My name is Anne Marie DeSpain, and I'm the library director, and I'm happy to be here. And do you want me to start off with the big lift?
Sure.
So the, the big lift is a collaborative, and it's really being spearheaded by the County of San Mateo, the Office of Education, and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. And they are really addressing this issue of the third-grade reading proficiency of kids in the county. There's 42% of kids in the county that are not reading at proficient levels by third grade. So they have four, I looked them up because I couldn't remember, but they have four big goals. And one is, they're working on preschool for all three and four-year-olds. I think they've started doing some targeted grants to some of the communities that need it the most. They have another goal to reduce chronic absences in those early grades. And then one that I know a little bit more about is inspiring summer learning opportunities. We did receive some Measure A funding in the last round. And so you may have heard about our summer learning program. We were revamping that, and there's a really great summer lunch component. We would look at Brisbane, but as I was telling Supervisor Tessier, there isn't room. So we really couldn't facilitate that at Brisbane. But that's something that we would definitely look at. And then the final one is supporting parents and caregivers as their children's first and most important teachers. So they've got a number of goals. Those are the, the main goals. I think what Supervisor Tessier was indicating, if she could link it to that, because that is a major county priority, and that was probably something we should have included, what are the scores for Brisbane? And so we'll provide that information to her. And then basically, she's just going to try and link it to, you know, schools are really important in a child's life, and for learning and providing that assistance. So that's really, she's just looking for that link. We did, if you look at the goal, or how it, I think there was a section where they asked, how does it align with county's priorities? We, we included it, but we didn't include the statistics. So that's what she was asking for, the specific statistics.
Okay. So it gives the county, you know, even more reason to award the funds, but it doesn't necessarily restrict us in the way they can be used. It would be for building the library, and that would set it, that would promote those goals.
Yeah, and that's correct.
Okay.
And Clay indicated, there, there actually were a couple of other libraries that received Measure A funding for capital improvements as well.
Okay. And you had also said that Supervisor Tessier had recommended splitting the request so that we would receive funds over several years. And you were going to, or the county was going to potentially look at how that might impact its budget. So would, how would that make a difference in terms of, you know, this year's Measure A funds? Are there a certain amount that are given out each year? And does the fact that they would be used over different years make a difference? I mean, when are the funds actually available? Does it matter when we use them?
It does. So Clay talked a little bit about this. They, there's a couple of things going on. They're estimating somewhere between 60 and 80 million a year that they're getting in Measure A funds. Now, they had a first cycle. The county's on a two-year budget cycle. And so the first two-year cycle, we're just entering in the second year. Yeah, I have to think about that. So they're, they've opened up what the process that just happened, they opened it up for new proposals. And they've said that they are going to fund the programs that they've already funded. And so that comes off the top. And then they also have priorities of both capital and IT projects. So that comes off the top, too. So what they've indicated, after those two priorities, there's about 15 to 20 million left for new proposals. And what they received was about, I think it was 340 new proposals, and it totaled something like 250 million. So they're, we thought we would hear about the proposals last Friday. They've set another budget priority session the Board of Supervisors has, so they're taking some more time to work through those. So I can't remember, did she indicate when? Clay mentioned that they're having a study session on Tuesday. I don't know when they'll make a decision. I haven't heard if they've, obviously, it'll take them a little bit of time to work through that.
Okay. Great, thank you. And then, sorry, getting back to city staff, I just had questions regarding the sites that were considered. So you had mentioned that the skate park went out of play when the council decided that would be the site for the new skate park. And has any consideration been given to whether we could have a new library and a skate park on that site together?
That option was not considered, no.
Okay.
We have not, we did not look at that.
And were any other city properties considered? Like, for example, at the ridge, there's that space next to the ball field that's currently vacant.
We did not consider that for the library. We, I think we did have some discussion about that, if we needed to relocate the basketball court. But then, I think the decision of the council was to, to co-locate the basketball court and the skateboard park where they currently are back in October. So that kind of came off the table. So there, I mean, it is a good point that, I don't know the exact square footage of that site up at the Northeast Ridge. Historically, that was, we, way back in time, we had thought about a, a community gymnasium at that site. But that, you know, has never really been able to move forward. But it's, it's a fairly large site for something at some point in time, and would have not only site for, you know, building, but also for parking. I think that would be pretty good at that there. But at this point, there really isn't any real plans on the table, or any kind of even thought, I think, in terms of what we would use that for.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Would you like to go next, Clark, or do you want to wait? You're on the Facilities Subcommittee that discussed this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm half of making the recommendations, so I don't have any questions.
Okay. Right?
Yeah, well, I'm really in the, in the same boat. I guess the only question I would have for, for the library staff, I guess I have two questions. In reference to the, three questions. In reference to the proposal that you provided us with the 5,000 to 7,000 foot, square foot options, and the different components for that. One new idea that's come up is, is incorporating a history room of some sort. And I'm, I'd be interested in your response to whether that makes sense, and how that would fit in, and what that would add to the square footage and so forth. The second thought I had, and some of the people who are here will remember, we had a conversation about the community development. There was a lot of people talking about Makerspaces. That seems to be sort of popular these days. And there's about, I think, 400 square foot that, that's in that, your plan, that mentions that. But it sounded to me as if that could be a larger facility, or more things could be done in that realm. And I'm, I'm just wondering- And I'm just wondering what you've thought about that, because the representative from the library mentioned that there are a lot of libraries are getting into that now and making a lot of unusual things available for loan for people to work on projects and all the way from machinery to artistic projects, you know, so all over the realm. And so, I'm interested in what's kind of new in that area. And the third thing that didn't come up in the conversation, and I'm wondering how you think about it and maybe the staff, too. And we actually, the Facilities Committee, didn't really talk a whole lot about this. And that is, if we go for the so-called LT Clark location and we put a new library there, one of the advantages of that, of building a new site, is that you're not disrupting the old site. The library is still functioning until the new one is ready to go. So, there's a lack of problem of, you know, the transition. You're going to have to have a moving period, of course, but we assume that that's going to be a lot less than a construction period. So, that means that that building is, will be available. And we haven't really talked about what we're going to do with that building. An expanded community center, you know, makes a lot of sense. But the third question that I had that relates to the library is that, you know, can you imagine some things that would be ancillary to the library that, you know, on special occasions, that that might be suitable for library activity as well as a sort of a branch operation? Because it's basically, you know, across the street. And I was wondering if you'd given any thought to something like that? Those are my three questions.
Okay. See if I can remember. On the history room, the, that, that history collection has, I mean, at times, the history collection that Clay talked about, part of that had been held at the library. And that was a function of the library for many years because of space issues. I think we ended up moving it down to the city. So, some of our libraries do have heritage or history rooms and those kinds of collections. And I think that is a perfect fit for a library. The space would be, I mean, obviously, it's not programmed in what we put together. So, that kind of, I can answer a couple of your questions with, you know, if, whatever space we have, we will fill. So, there's lots of opportunities. We included, I mean, the, what the seven thousand gets you that the five thousand doesn't, is a large community room, and we would highly recommend that. We do large programs. We do have performances where a lot of people come out. And so, finding space for that, dedicated library space, is problematic. So, that kind of gets at the space across, you know, the current library as well. I mean, right now, we're doing large programs like the Tricycle Music Fest up at the Mission Blue Center. So, that would present another opportunity. I think there's been lots of ideas around maybe homework, that summer program that I talked about. We could do some of that in another space. So, I think that once we start, this is a very high-level program. Once we start working on it, we would be making some of those decisions about what the priorities are. And so, the maker space is the same. You, there are libraries that are doing that in trailers, in places where they are mobile now. They're bringing that in. I just heard a story on NPR where they're bringing a mobile maker space into children's hospitals. So, there's, I mean, you can have a big space like the tech shop does down in, you know, Menlo Park. And there are libraries, new libraries, that are incorporating those spaces. And you can also have small spaces, too, or places where you bring it out for that, for that activity and then put it away. So, the library currently has a 3D printer, and it's small, but certainly, if we had a dedicated spot and a place for kids, I mean, people just need spaces to do things. You know that. They need places to meet, to come, you know, talk, do homework, just do things. So, it is really that community space.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
So, people kind of get an idea of square footage, I think. This room is probably about eighteen hundred square feet. So, if you times that by four, it's a little over about seventy-two hundred, right? So, that's type of footage we're talking about, square footage. So, it's, it's, it's a lot. You can do a lot with seven thousand square feet.
And just to tag on to the seven thousand square foot idea, Anne Marie, maybe you can talk a little about, you had mentioned when we met last week about how some libraries have that community space on a different floor or somewhere that's, you know, accessible by, you know, a different door so that the library could be closed, but that community groups could still access that space. And can you talk also about the staffing desires for having one floor versus two floor and how that would work with a two-floor building?
Yeah. I didn't, I'll just, I wanted to mention the temporary space, too. We haven't really explored that. But that situation where we don't have to find a temporary space or limit service, I mean, in some communities, we've just closed the library and sent people to another location. So, it's an ideal situation. We always prefer a single story because of operation. It just reduces operational costs. We don't have to staff two floors. So, from a efficiency and economical point of view, that's our preference. But there are many spaces where, and many libraries that function on two floors, it just increases some of the operating costs. There are libraries now, and we've been working with some architects in some other projects, where they're designing the spaces so that some spaces can stay open even when the library's closed. There are some libraries that have some self-service opportunities, so you can still go and pick up your hold book and do some of that in a lobby-type setting, even if the library's not open. And then, a really popular idea is this idea of a community space. So, there's, you don't have to enter the library. You enter a lobby, and then you can go into a community space that can be open later or earlier. So, that's kind of, just flexibility is really what library design today is all about. It's the electrical, it's the data, it's the furniture, being able to move it. All of the shelves now are on casters, so you can move them out of the way, bring them back. Furniture and equipment, same thing. And so, it's the same kind of looking at walls or looking at multi-use and then different times of the day as well.
And with makerspaces, have you seen that in shared-use areas where they could be accessible even if the library is closed? Or would that present any issues?
I haven't seen that. I'm sure it exists. I don't know if my colleagues have. Francisco's the maker expert, as you heard him talk about it last time. Have you?
Yeah, there are. And that's part of the key. The idea of a maker space was that it was a community investment. So, the first makerspaces were in people's garages, and people would bring their equipment, and they would share it. So, in some instances, for example, in Long Beach where I was, it was also the station, the TV station for the city. So, the maker space served multiple people, multiple organizations. And different people had privileges to open it and work with community members. And so, you know, it opened it up to council members doing their own TV show. It opened it up to the community doing PSAs. It was pretty interesting, and it worked really well. It's just we needed to collaborate with other nonprofits, organizations, the schools, and so on and so forth, and so forth. So, I've seen that happen. It's just about collaborating with the right folks.
Right. Great. One question I had that I forgot to mention earlier was Kevin Friar had mentioned this to me when I met with the Friends of the Brisbane Library, that this may trigger the public arts ordinance. And I had asked staff about that. Can you talk about what amount would that be? And has that been included in this cost estimate?
So, it has not specifically been identified in the cost estimate. It's one percent of basically the building permit. So, if it was a four-million-dollar project, it would be roughly forty thousand dollars. My guess is that we would probably design art into the project, so that the fee itself may be negated. But there certainly would be, you know, art as part of the project.
Okay. Great.
And that will be part of the design, and that will be get, be figured out when we go through the design cost.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam. Yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, I just want to make a comment that I'm really excited about this. I know a lot of folks out there and watching, you know, who are not watching, you know, have waited a long time for this. I'm sure a lot of, a lot of folks felt that it was never going to happen. But, you know, sometimes circumstances happen, and it's all about timing, and you look at what, you know, what you can afford, what's within your means. And I think we have the right conditions to put together a really wonderful library for our community. You know, originally, I was thinking, oh, you know, and I'm just going to talk about the, you know, the different sites. You know, I did like the teen center site because of its location. And, you know, I went out there and was checking it out and seeing where, you know, how it fits in with the rest of the community. You know, Clay mentioned some of the pros. There's also that it's next to the shuttle bus stop. And, yeah, I'm just, you know, right in the center of town, and there's potential for other development that might happen later on down the line. And then, you know, I talked to, talked it over with my family and brought them out to both sites, and they all liked the five-star cafe site. And so, you know, I had been to that site, you know, several times, but I didn't really look at the size of it. And I was actually really blown away by how big it is. And, you know, you have all those trees there, and it kind of, you know, crowds in the space. But when you really look at the actual site, and then, of course, when you look at the numbers, the numbers don't, the numbers tell the story, the accurate story. And so, it's like, okay, you know, this should, you know, for me personally, this should be the location because it gives you more options. You know, and then, you know, I was thinking, okay, it's going to be five thousand square feet. And then, when I was looking at the staff report, talking about seven thousand square feet. Of course, seven thousand square feet adds to the amount that you'd have to spend. But, you know, you will get what you could do with seven thousand square feet and having that additional space. And, you know, okay, you know, it could be more like that library, community center space that I think everyone really likes with our small library and small community space. And so, yeah, I'm in favor of the larger space as well. So, you know, some of my questions, let's see. So, parking. So, is parking part of the design concept, or are we thinking of off-street parking for the library?
Well, I'm going to basically try to punt all those kinds of design questions because that's the purpose of getting an architect on board.
Okay.
Is that we can start getting our arms around those types of questions. We have not done any schematic designs or, all we've looked at is just kind of the footprint. As you noted, there's clearly enough land there to be able to build a project. But parking, access, how it, access the street, how we deal with the use next door, those are all very important design questions that we're going to have to wrestle with.
Okay. And then, you know, in the staff report, another funding sources from the Light Ridge JPA for conceptual design, cost estimate, and cost model plan. So, what do you expect the estimate to be for that? There's fifty thousand dollars there.
Well, it'll be certainly much more than that.
Okay.
That's something I need to sit down and talk with Randy about, and I suspect that there'll be kind of a staged process here. I think we got to get kind of a conceptual idea of what we want to do and then go from there in terms of, I mean, it may, you might want to kind of think about it as like your skateboard park process, you know, where you kind of have various kind of segmented steps. And, you know, you kind of have to get a concept of what you want to do. And then, you know, if you get your arms around that, then you can kind of go to the next phases of actually, you know, doing the design. And ultimately, you obviously got to get the bits and specs when you know exactly what you want to do. But it's kind of an iterative process.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, you know, I think the layout that you guys proposed for the library, I mean, for the skate park was a good one, where it had the different steps, and you could follow along, check it off, keep you guys on your toes. So...
Stuart's really good at putting those little bubbles together.
Right.
Yeah.
Distinct, distinct actions.
Smiley face guy.
Well, at the end, you get a smiley guy with a, on a skateboard park.
Smiley guy with a book.
Happy flowchart.
When you guys were, you know, kind of putting things together, you know, a lot of the new libraries have cafes, and that used to be a cafe. And when I was actually at the site, you know, old-time Brisbane guy came up to me and goes, man, I remember when that was the five-star cafe, and I used to go and have breakfast there, you know, almost every morning. And, you know, I miss having breakfast in town. And, yeah, you know, it's kind of a shame that we don't have that anymore. But was a cafe part of your kind of library space essentials? Or is that kind of like put you out of your budget?
We didn't discuss it at that level. Yeah. I mean, because that's more of a design, design issue. I mean, that'd be something that incorporated in it, but it might be something maybe for the future, too. I mean, as Clay alluded at the beginning of his staff report about, you know, in the future, if the Eagles becomes available and we're able to acquire that and then expand out, then that would probably be more, more real. But I know that a lot of libraries do like coffee shop-type things, or, you know, for teens is mainly, mainly for, you know. But, you know...
You can ask for tea or some coffee and then book.
Have a cafe. You're talking about it as more of a restaurant-type.
You know, I mean, just something small, you know, that you, you know, see a lot of little libraries.
I'm not, yeah.
Yeah. And then, okay, so in regards to Measure A, so we have February 27th is one of those dates that we need to...
Keep in mind, yeah. Although I think, you know, they are going to meet, the board's going to meet on Tuesday, so I think we'll get a much better sense of what their process is coming out of that meeting.
Okay.
But we'll keep an eye, we're definitely going to keep an eye on that. And Anne Marie and I, our staffs have been working on the letter of intent, and we'll continue to work on, you know, whatever we need to do to get into the county process.
Okay. Great. And then, you know, the other thing, I guess, were you hoping for us to decide on, you know, how to move forward with the community process tonight?
Well, what I was asking for you to do is to authorize me to work with my staff in putting together an RFP for the Architectural Services and also to conceptually agree to some sort of library planning committee. And we would bring that back to you at a future meeting for you actually to establish that. And I think if we do those two steps tonight, you know, we can get this process, the momentum of this process moving along.
Okay. So, we have two steps that you want us to, not three steps?
Well, I was also suggesting that you kind of conceptually agree to the funding part of it.
Yes.
And conceptually agree to the building plan, just as kind of starting points, realizing that the details of all those things will get fine-tuned as we move along in the process.
Yeah. Yeah, I am, you know, I'm in full support of doing that. So, hope my colleagues are in agreement.
And just a side note, one of the beauties of, you know, being able to actually build a new library, it opens up the current library space to a community space of twenty-seven hundred square feet. And there's a lot of things that we can do. I know people are always looking for it. Brisbane Dance Workshop is looking for it. The seniors are already there, and, you know, Brisbane Dance Workshop's already there. I mean, you can do an art consortium incubator, you know, different things. I mean, it'd be a really nice space for community to really have, that extra space. So, it'd be a real treat.
True.
Side note.
I'd like to say that, conceptually, I think that we should go ahead and look at designing it. As far as financing, I'm assuming when you're talking about the business license fee, you're talking about borrowing against future revenues.
Correct.
So, pre-spending money we don't have yet that we anticipate getting through those revenues.
Right.
And I think that that's something that we should always be cautious about because, you know, we look at it in our budget that we assume we have them. But I would recommend caution. But I would recommend caution on that type of pre-spending of revenues.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. And I just kind of emphasize your concern about it is that that's why I think we identified only a portion of the business license fee. Because we certainly, you know, while we're pretty confident in that revenue stream, there's can always be ups and downs in it. So we don't wanna get up against the edge of it. We wanna have something that we have plenty of flexibility or we have high, very high expectation that we'd have enough money to meet the annual payment.
And what kind of timeframe for, with the $130,000 revenue per year, what kind of timeframe were you thinking that, or projecting for the 1.3 million?
It really is gonna depend on what the rates are at the time. But I think Stuart was predicting somewhere in the 10- to 15-year period at the time. Yeah.
And then, I think we should let some of the public speak that would like to and then we can confer a little bit more if we'd like.
Unless you wanna ask the question, does anybody think this is a bad idea?
I think that if people didn't wanna be heard on it, they wouldn't be sitting here. But we can ask them to be brief because we haven't been as time-conscious as we could have been so far. So if there's any members of the public who would like to speak, I do have one slip from Barbara Ebel. And we'll let her start it off with her comments and then we'll move on to other members of the public.
So if you'll forgive me for not reintroducing myself, I'll definitely pass your thanks along to OSEC. You already heard my first point about that I felt the library is very needed. I was curious about, and you touched briefly on renovating the existing building to use both floors for the library. I know that, I think this could be done with minimum interrupt to the existing floor while the lower floor was remodeled and possibly moving the community center nearby. Because, as you know, the community center is also a heavily impacted facility here in Brisbane. I think the most important thing is to keep the community center and the library intimate with each other. Because I know when my son was involved in activities at the community center and something would come up and I'd have, you know, minor personal catastrophes and I'd be five minutes late picking him up from his activity at the community center, it was a blessing to know that he could go upstairs and be in the company of trustworthy adults, you know? So that, because if you separate those spaces, I'm really concerned that, you know, when the BDW's instructor leaves or whatever, the kids are just, you know, turned out. And some of the kids that participate in those programs are pretty young. So I really think that having those two spaces connected in some way, maybe across the street's okay. But I think putting it down at the teen center, for me, that would be, you know, separating by that much distance would be a bad call. I'm also a little, just gonna say briefly that I'm baffled by the fact that only 20 years after our library was built, we're looking, we're already realizing it's inadequate. I mean, 30 or 40 years is not that old for a building, at least, you know, somebody who lived in San Francisco, in a 100-year-old building. I'm just, I'm baffled by that and I'd like to be a fly on a wall. If anybody feels they need to say anything about that, I'll listen. But... And then the one other idea I had is, we talked, they talked, Clay talked about how it would be very difficult to turn the park into a library extension. Well, I think if you're just raw turning, if you're just cannibalizing the park for the library, I think that's true. But perhaps the legislature would be amenable to relocating the park so that we could expand on that site if, for whatever reason, the five-star cafe site does not work out. And I just wanted to put that bug in your ear and see maybe if it could be considered at some point. Maybe so they can give you a quick up or down on that. I'm not sure. I think my son would like to say something too.
Hi, my name is Byron and I wanna say a couple things 'cause adults aren't the only ones affected by the library changing. First of all, the computers. Not all of the kids have access to computers at home. So like when we have homework that has to do with computers, the computers at the library are very important. Also, not only do we need to make sure that there are computers, but there should probably be more than there currently are because kids, like, they go to a club after school so they get to the library at 4:00 and by then, all the computers are being used by people playing video games. So, another thing is the little activity room off the side. I think could be made a little bigger because, like, when they're doing a movie and some people have already seen the movie, then they wanna play games so that the projector, they get in the way of the projector sometimes. So it's...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I just respond to the historical issue?
Sure.
Just to give a little history, the library, current library was planned in 1970, so it's quite a while ago. And at that time, the city had very little money. And if it weren't for the county's library system being able to, you know, put up a substantial amount of the funding and then to combine it together with a community center, you know, it just wouldn't have happened. So it was a very important collaboration between the county library system and the city. And if it hadn't been for the county library system being willing to work with us and we were able to get them to, you know, provide a lot of the basic infrastructure and then the city was able to get the land. And so it was just about as much as anybody could afford at that time is what it amounts to. But it was a heck of a lot better than nothing. And so I think that, you know, it served us very well. And of course, it was designed for the conditions that existed in essentially the 1970s. Well, you know, nobody even heard of a computer in 1970. So there's just so much that's changed that that's why we really need a new space.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Michael Schuman, Brisbane resident, longtime member of the Friends of the Brisbane Library. I would go on much longer if I didn't feel like there's a lot of support for the library. So I'm very excited and wanna thank you for the work that has been done up to this point. And I think for people who aren't familiar with sort of a lot of what has been discussed and the plan that's been put forward and still think a library is a place where you check out books and such, I think it's worth noting that many other things happen in libraries these days. And some of them were alluded to, from the makers' space to children reading programs. And there's a lot of cooperation that goes on already between the schools and the library. And it sounds like there's an intention to do more of that. So I think it's gonna be a really valuable extension to our community. And then I also wanted to voice my support for the five-star site. I mean, it sounds like you're moving that way, but having that extra space, as well as I think it's important for visitation and sort of having that life there, I think that it's more important that we keep that part of the street active, you know, than moving that down to the teen center. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. What else from the public who'd like to speak? I feel like I'm trying to coax people up here. Seeing no takers. Oh, Kevin.
Yes, my name's Kevin Fryer. I live at 414 Swallow Tail Court. And I have been involved with Friends of the Brisbane Library probably the longest of anybody now, having been with them since about 2001, I think. I'm the historical memory of Friends of the Brisbane Library. And I've seen this library project on the, in the discussion for a very, very long time. And I'm really happy to see it now here, actually crossing the threshold of what is possible. And one thing that I would want to underscore, it's been mentioned, I think Clay mentioned it and I believe maybe Ray mentioned it as well, is the idea of a history room or a place where we could consolidate the historical documents that the city has. City of Brisbane doesn't have a historical society per se. It doesn't have a historical museum. Many small communities do. And I think it's a very, very valuable thing for a community to have a place where people can come in and do research on the history, where they can have access to the documents and the photographs and so on. So I would like to underscore that a library can be a really good repository for our history. So I just wanted to underscore that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. So, we would like to, we're not really passing any motions here.
Well, I think we are.
I think we are, yeah.
You had a motion from the next steps in the document, which is the second, the last page. I kind of lay out the three aspects of that, which are actually four aspects.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the financing plan that Clay has proposed, or staff has proposed, as well as the, well, Clark...
Architectural.
So, you know, you guys are on this thing. Why don't you guys make the motion? I'm gonna take that back. I know you wanted to do it and so...
Okay, Cliff started it and then the architectural design. Just allow staff to move forward with the parameters that are needed to go to the next phase of the project.
The site, the site being the LT Clark site.
Right.
And the fourth being the establishing a stakeholder advisory committee.
Right.
Right?
Right, you got it.
Those are all good.
That sounds very good. But I also was hoping that we would have a little bit of discussion about the site.
Making the motion does not preclude discussion.
So...
Would you second it?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so it's on the table.
Okay. Any discussion?
Okay, so, you know, I went and visited the five-star cafe site and I agree with Cliff. It's much bigger than you expect it to be. I mean, you don't realize it's there until you're looking at it for a specific purpose. And it's unbelievable that, you know, I've passed by it so many times and just never noticed it. So I think it does have advantages, you know, being central to town and having the size that it has. I guess my one issue though is, you know, the skate park site. You know, as we were going through the skate park process, I was thinking in the back of my mind that would be a great location for a new library because it would tie in the park, potentially any development that goes on here, I thought it would be good for future planning. So, and I know you didn't really, you know, as a council, we decided that that would be the site for the skate park. But we never really looked at whether it could also be a site for both because it is large enough for both in terms of the square footage. So I just wanted to put that out there at this point. And then the other site that I thought about in my mind was the ridge. And, you know, if it doesn't get used for a library, then, you know, I think that we should keep it in our minds for some potential future use because what I'm talking about is the site where it's right next to the ball fields and it's like a staging area appropriate for what's used. I think there's some batting cages there. And every time I walk by it, I take walks along Mission Blue a lot. And I see it and I just see the expansive views of the mountain and, you know, the natural sunlight that hits that area. So I think that, you know, it might not be ideal for a library because it doesn't have access to Central Brisbane, although it does to the ridge. I just wanna, you know, put that in the back of our minds. But going back to the skate park, you know, I wanted to, you know, and just have a discussion about whether the council would wanna consider that as a site for the library in addition to the skate park, if that would be possible. Because, like I said, it's right next to the park. I think it gets a lot of good sunlight. So it might be a good spot for a garden and community room. And it's in walking distance from Littman pretty well, though not quite as close to BES.
But that then means moving something somewhere else.
Right, the basketball courts.
I, you know, I had certainly considered that, you know, and I know Ray and I have talked about that. But at this point, I wouldn't consider it, you know. I think, I think this site offers the best flexibility for right now and in the future. You know, when you go to expand it even further, at that site, you know, we would have to move to basketball court. And right now, the design that we're looking at for the skate park is inclusive of two little spots. The skate spot where it's at right now and then an end spot right now where it's at, where the, I think, bench is or where the tree stump is. It would have two little skate sites and then the basketball court would stay in situ. And right now, I'm not really amenable to extending the process, I guess.
Sure. Okay.
But, you know, the, just on the Northeast Ridge site, years and years ago, and Clay alluded to this in his presentation, we looked at that as a site for a community gymnasium. And I still think that a community gymnasium would go there. And I think that would be our next big capital project at some point, you know, when we get these done that you might wanna look at, you know. That, you know, that's really, with the Mission Blue Center and the sports field and the tennis courts up there, you know, it's got a real dynamic for, you know...
Recreation.
Yeah, physical activity. And that's something that may be real fitting up there. So, you know. And I think that was, you know, something we discussed, I think, probably back in the 90s. That's where the, I think it actually was before Clay and that was just passed on to him. So he does remember the discussion.
Yeah. Actually, I think I was here when we really got going on the discussion of the gymnasium.
Right.
Yeah. And we looked into it and, you know, I think one of the problems we ran into with that particular project or concerns was unlike the library, which we have an established funding mechanism for operating the library, we would have to invent a funding mechanism for a gymnasium. And it was starting to look like it was gonna be pretty expensive. It was gonna be a...
Kind of like a swimming pool.
Kind of like a swimming pool. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think the swimming pool had higher priority. So...
Right, it did.
Yeah. Well, we built a swimming pool and then, yeah, for sure.
Okay. Well, maybe with our next big project, maybe if anything gets developed at Southeast Ridge or at the quarry, you know, we can think about what kind of community benefit we would like to see up there and...
We get that third hotel out at airport.
Well, I would like to say that I'm more for keeping our downtown vibrant. And I think that having the library in that location makes the most sense to keep the vibrancy there and to not let us have, you know, more deadening of the space. I think it can be a very opening thing and be very good in that location. So if we're done with our discussion...
Sure.
Move forward with the...
Yeah, and I just wanted to say I'm very excited that I'm on the council to be able to work on, you know, this issue when it comes before the community. And very happy to see it moving forward and looking forward to a new library. I think it'll be a really great benefit to the community.
Call a question.
Okay. So do we... So do we have a...
We have the motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
You want, you want to take a little break?
Yes, I think that we should and just...
And just one more thing, did staff want direction on what kind of peop, groups we would like to see in a library planning committee or not at the...
Um, you know, my, my thought is that maybe I can, well, here's a good question, uh, that I didn't really get into tonight, but, um, you know, the facilities subcommittee's been working on this issue up until now. And, um, so there's kind of a question, I think, of whether that subcommittee should continue to work on this or whether there should be a, a subcommittee of the council, in particularly since we do have a person who is on our library JPA board. Um, it probably would make sense for her to be kind of intimately involved in this.
Yes.
So it's just a thought that, you know, maybe, maybe another council subcommittee is put together to, to kind of work with a citizen, a group of citizens. Certainly, I mean, I think we're definitely thinking the Friends of the Library. I'm kind of thinking that it's kind of almost, um, you know, we identify groups, but it's kind of an, almost like an all come, all comers group, you know, where we just invite people to come in and participate because I think we want, we want as many people to be kind of involved and, and have ownership on the, on the design part.
That's one of the things we can, I mean, the, the motion included the stakeholder option, which is bringing in all the, you know, components of the community and the library staff and so forth that, you know, needs to be a part of the process. Uh, but we need to identify, uh, you know, exactly who that would be and so forth. I think we can do that at a subsequent stage.
Yeah, I think the staff can come with a proposal and we either write it or adjust it, you know?
Right.
Yeah, and I, I would just say I would, I would suggest definitely including, you know, the, um, the mob and also best PTO along with the Friends of the Brisbane Library. And I'd be happy to also work on that as the representative on the library JPA.
We'll, we'll round up all the usual suspects.
Right.
Yeah, I think that it's really important for the facilities subcommittee to be involved so that there's also a reality on, on what we're going to be doing and what we're able to do. So, but we can come back to that. I think that's a little bit more than we're going to be able to get done tonight.
Right. I mean, there's different aspects of this thing, so I mean, well, there'll be plenty of opportunity for different, different subcommittees to be involved in, in...
Remember how long it took to build a playground?
But that was just...
Colors.
This costs more money, so this will go fa, bit faster. There's an inverse relationship between cost and speed.
Okay.
Remember how long it took to build the park? The whole city council was recalled.
So we're going to take a five-minute break?
Yeah. Um, I, I just have one question, Madam Mayor. Is, is there anything on the agenda that, that doesn't have to be done tonight in case we're like burning the midnight oil? That doesn't have to be approved?
Um...
Or maybe we could ask the staff to consider that and when we come back from break, they can tell us, uh, what could be postponed.
If you can give me a couple of minutes, I'll confirm.
Sure.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
While we have our break.